I'd like to call a trustee meeting to order. Good evening. Welcome to the Eastern Michigan Auditorium again. Vanessa, please call the roll for attendance.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis? Treasurer D'Varity?
D'Varity, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Here, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes, here.
Trustee McKnight-Martin?
Here.
Trustee Landau would like to participate via telephone tonight. And to that end, our bylaws require a vote from the members present to invite him to do so. I'd like to entertain a motion to allow trustee Landau to participate via telecom.
D'Varity moves. We have trustee Landau by telecom.
And we have support. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer D'Varity?
D'Varity, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Martin?
Yes.
The motion carries. And trustee Landau, please indicate what city you're attending from and identify yourself each time you speak or vote this evening, please.
Yeah, trustee Landau here, attending from Frankfurt, Michigan.
Thank you. We're glad to have you in attendance remotely. Vanessa, please call the roll for attendance. Here.
Treasurer D'Varity?
D'Varity, here.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, here.
Trustee McKnight-Martin?
McKnight-Martin, here.
Thank you. Next, we need to approve the agenda, which I believe is in front of each of you. A motion for approval. From one of the trustees.
I move to approve the agenda.
Support.
And I have support. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer D'Varity?
D'Varity, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight-Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. The agenda stands approved. Tab A in your packet this evening, approval of our minutes from the meeting of November 16, 2021. Do I hear a motion?
Do we approve the minutes?
Support D'Varity.
I'd like to make one correction to the minutes on page two at the bottom to correct the spelling of former trustee Proccasini. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Also, in the same paragraph, my comment about the Ann Arbor District giving a 2% bonus was for the Ann Arbor District Public Schools, not just the library.
Ah, good catch. We'll make that correction as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that said, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer D'Varity?
D'Varity, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight-Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. The minutes stand approved. Citizen participation. Ms. Kissel, representing the WCC Education Association, do you have comments for us?
I do.
Please proceed.
Let's see what I can see today. Well, it's December 2021. So let me begin by expressing my deepest condolences to the family and friends of those lost in the tragic school shooting at Oxford High School. As an educator and a parent, I shudder to think about the what-ifs of situations such as these. It's too easy to fall into the belief that it couldn't happen to me or couldn't happen here, so it remains of such vital importance that our WCC community continues to support all of the efforts to educate and support one another to prevent such events. As has been the case for many months, there are no grievances at this time, yet there is much to report. Since last month, the WCCA has worked with HR in the collection of vaccination data, held a number of listening sessions with members in preparation for the 2022 negotiation, and continued to plan for a fuller return to campus. The WCCEA and the college had agreed to a number of letters of agreement, but as has been the case since March 2020, plans change as new information comes to light. While I'm unable to share all the details of this ongoing discussion, there is hope that what we will agree to will work for the majority of the membership, so it is so valuable to know that President Blanca and her team remain open to conversations about how best to use the campus resources. This will be so important moving forward as we see articles daily about the changes in the workplace. And of course, we feel it on our campus as more departures are announced and vacancies go unstuck. I'd also like to take a moment to note the recent changes to the Office Professional Technicians, or the OPTs. Retirement, job changes, and resignations have changed the leadership of this union. Luckily, those of us from the WCCEA were able to meet with the new president, Nanette Knox, and vice president Kwame Thomas Williams a week ago to offer any guidance and support we could. While I know Nanette and Kwame would have preferred a smoother transition, they are both dedicated to the betterment of their unit. I'm also reminded that the only thing we can say for certain these days is that change is here to stay. We must all keep in mind that the value of working together for a common goal with humility and kindness. Now, as the final week of the term is upon us and another calendar year comes to an end, I try to find time and space to be reflective about all that has come to pass. This is often difficult in a rush to grade, or to counsel, to advise, to shop, to cook, all those chores of living. A recent article entitled "Teachers and Students Can Only Take So Much" from Edtopia regarding teacher wellness stands out to me. It talks about decreasing, whenever possible, the social complexity by slowing down, by working in the smallest groups possible, by building real community through meaningful work, by building expectations with students, keeping them simple and concrete, and then using those expectations to provide much-needed boundaries. We can seek to provide as much predictability as possible for ourselves and our students. Now, this predictability is in short supply these days, but the WCCA stands by its promise to continue meaningful and productive conversations and discussions to contribute to our health and well-being and the legacy of WCC. So happy holidays to all, and I wish you all a safe and restful break. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? There are no public comments. Are there any written communications?
There are five received.
Thank you. Moving to monthly reports, tab B, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to move that we accept the personnel recommendations.
And support.
Support.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to give a nice, warm shout-out for Barb Philinger. She has done a phenomenal job in her position as the director of budget and purchasing. And I just want to say she really took this college at heart and what needed to be done correctly. And if there was any issues, I never heard from her about it. So I just want to say thank you so much, Barb, for working with us in 21 years. You deserve to go ahead and take your retirement. Good luck to you.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yeah, I'd like to add to that as well. She kept us out of jail for a long time. Got it. And I hope we keep in touch with her because she has lots of secrets and she knows where all the bodies are buried, so we should keep in touch with her.
Is that for the record?
I noticed that we've lost three instructors, and we've gained some student success coaches, advisors. Could someone explain briefly to the old lady what the Title III and CTE mean after their...
Title III is a grant. These are grant-funded positions.
These are grant-funded, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And CTE is career and technical education.
Aha, okay. We've still lost two counselors, and I don't see any posting for that. I hope that comes soon. But that's all I had to say about that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer D'Varity?
D'Varity, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau? Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight-Martin?
Thank you. The recommendations are approved. We move to the financial reports, which are tab C in the packet tonight. Before we move forward to that, VP Barnes, do you have some light that you'd like to shed on these for us?
Yes, I'll share a few comments on where we are year-to-date. First, I'll walk you through a little bit of the revenue. You can see that our revenue is trending quite well versus the budget, starting with tuition and fees. The winter tuition, we actually started registration about a month early, so we're still getting arms around how we're doing, but so far it's trending positively. And our student fees are also trending positively, leading to about a half million dollars favorable in the tuition and fees. In terms of the taxes, the property taxes, that half million dollars is simply timing. That's not a permanent favorable variance. But state appropriations, most of that is a permanent favorable variance. I've mentioned a couple of times before, we're expecting to end the year at about $600,000 favorable for the year. The rest of that would be timing. Trade partnerships, $800,000. We've had a lot more activity in trade partnerships than we had expected during the summer, so we didn't budget for a lot of that, so that's exceeded our expectations. And I would like to draw your attention also to this other line. There's some fast-track training that Dr. Mueller and her team have been sponsoring, that we've been scholarshiping from the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund, which has been a huge success. So we're training things like pharmacy techs, fitness trainers, and so forth, but that's been a really, really good success. So in total, about 2.7 million favorable. And in expenditures, we're also trending well, 1.5 million favorable. Part of this is due to the vacancies. The vacancies are exceeding what we had budgeted. We right now have been averaging about 37, 38 vacancies this year, which does lead to some savings, so we do have savings in here because of those vacancies. Also, the on-campus activity is still a little bit less than we had expected in the budget, which does lead also to some savings on campus. Less activity on campus means less cost. But in total, I would say about half of that is permanent, and about half of it is timing. So in total, if you look at the revenue over the expenditures and transfers, we're about $4.2 million right now trending favorable to budget.
Any questions, VP Barnes? Thank you. Thank you. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for November 2021 as follows. General fund, deferred maintenance fund, capital fund, and combined schedule of investments, all funds. Do I hear a motion?
D'Varity moves. We accept these financial reports.
Thank you. Support. Trustee Hatcher, any further discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer D'Varity?
D'Varity, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes, Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight-Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. The reports stand approved. Tab D in our packet tonight is facilities development report, and I believe EVP Johnson is going to describe to us what kind of progress we've made. Thank you.
Good evening, all. So we're going to have two parts of this report. One is we'll go through a few of the key projects, and then we also brought some pictures of the status of the renovation of the ML, so we thought we would show the board its current state, which is in a state of demolition. But starting with the top of the page here, so I'll skip O for Morris Lawrence, the Great Lakes. We are in the final stages of planning. We have submitted all our plans to the township. We're waiting for final approval from the township, so we are hoping to break ground within the week on that project. So that's, I would say that the Great Lakes project is right on schedule. Not much else. If you were to go around the Great Lakes building, you would see all the orange fencing is up, so we've got the perimeter up around it, so the site has now been defined and secured. And we're working with the Great Lakes personnel on the transition, so we have access to the building and they can still do the things that they need to do.
Trustee Hatcher?
Do you anticipate any problem with the township? We've had them before.
We are closely working with them on a number of questions that they have that are beyond normal but within reason, so we do not anticipate any problems when we're finished.
I'm not surprised.
Any other questions?
Great. A couple more items to point out. I'll note under deferred maintenance, project item six, the BE building, we have started the storefront, so the new door entry systems. There are three entries. We actually start on the 16th, starting with the entry that comes back towards main campus, and then we'll go to the one on the parking lot side, and then finally there's an entryway that leads over to TI. And so we're going to do one at a time and finish them up, so we hope to have those done by the end of January. Also point out for the board, the top of the next page, item number 17, the LA wayfinding. So we embarked upon an assessment of the room numbering scheme for the LA building. It was of need, and so we came up with a new scheme. We got great input across campus for that. We came up with a new scheme. We have brought down all the old signs. The company Takeform will be in next week to put up temporary signs for us while they're manufacturing the final signs, which will go in the first part of January. As you might imagine, there are a lot of different systems and sites to which room numbering references are, so folks are working very hard across campus to get all our databases updated, communications to go out. EVP Blakey and team are doing communications out to students that will be impacted as we start to say, hey, you know, this used to be LA 102, now it's 110, whatever that new room number is. So there's a lot of work going on around campus for this, but we hope when we're done that the way that we went about the LA building will be a good model for us as we think about wayfinding in other buildings across campus, and then we hope the E can extend that, not just within buildings but outside, too. So this is the first of kind of many steps along the way for that. Then maybe if there's no more questions in this report...
Trustee?
I'd just like to say that changing the room numbers and wayfinding in LA sounds just too reasonable, and the chaos that used to ensue there was kind of educational, but never mind. I have a question about the ML renovation, single-mode fiber upgrade. Is that $47,000 more than the several million we agreed to at one other meeting about upgrading the construction?
No, sorry, trustee Hatcher, that is actually part of the 3.5 million addition.
Any other questions?
Great. I'm going to ask for to have a PowerPoint, and we'll do just a short picture show.
To whom do we owe our thanks for these photographs we're about to see?
We actually, STenco, who is our general contractor, twice a week, they take photographs and they put it out to a site that we use, including drone photographs, which have been very, very useful for us. So they have been a great partner for us. So once again, the scope of the project at 13.55 million is pretty much the entire building except for the auditorium and a few other rooms, including the kitchen. This is a high-level work plan. Basically, the punchline is we are right on schedule. Three main areas that we're working on, of course, the demolition work, which we're just about done. Demolition will be done first part of January. The HVAC system assessment was next. We've completed that HVAC system assessment and have found no significant issues. In fact, a fair amount of the ductwork that we thought we were going to have to replace upon inspection, that we're actually going to be able to reuse. So a little bit of savings that is going to come back, and that's the nature of any project, is a little bit of give-and-take that goes on. And then finally, the floor trenching that relates to the technology work that we're doing, and I have a few pictures. So we've started the floor trenching throughout the building. So now to the pictures. So this is a picture of the east main entrance. The Board might recall that we're actually demoing and inspecting the integrity of all the steel structure. We took off all the concrete that was in not the best of shape, and then we're going to be restoring both the skylight system as well as the posts and the structure itself. This is the west entrance, so this is the one that leads from the main campus, so you get a sense of that. That's a drone picture of the actual both ends of it, so you get a sense of just the significant work done on the outside. So now we've walked inside. We're kind of in the middle of the atrium, looking back towards that east main entrance, so you see the demolition of the floor, a little bit of the walls. This is that same atrium, but now we've turned and looked towards the east entrance, sorry, the west entrance, looking back out the windows.
So the pond is in the background there?
The pond is in the background. Chair Milliken, yep. And then that's a little bit more. It took a long time to get that old tile floor off there. That took the contractors quite a long time, and as you might imagine, quite a dusty job, you know, at that. So now we're standing inside. If you envision the three main conference rooms with the walls open, kind of right in the middle of that room, turned and looking back out towards the atrium, so you get a sense of the demolition work, both on the floor, the walls, all the finishes, as well as the ceilings. And the ceiling is critical because, as I mentioned a bit ago, that assessment of the HVAC system, all the electrical system, the wiring systems, we needed to do all those assessments. This gives you another picture of that same room, but more of a focus up towards the ceiling area, and you get a sense of that. Now, this next picture, the next two pictures, is the floor trenching. So we're in the main conference room areas, and you actually see the trenched floors. So one of the main themes was flexibility, right? So flexibility of use not being bound by the location of technology. So there was a fair amount of investment that's putting into supporting that flexibility so that the rooms can be used by our community in a lot of different ways. There's another picture of it. You get a sense of that. And this is just in this room. Now, we're moving out to the atrium. There's trenching that needs to go on there, a number of the classrooms, as well as in ML 150. So in this picture here, imagine the long hallway. You're standing at what used to be the reception desk as you walked in that main entrance. There's a desk on the right. Turn that corner, look down the hall towards the Police Academy. It gives you a sense of the demolition of every one of the finishes, the ceilings, the walls, and the floor. A few pictures of restrooms. A lot of work was done in the restroom. This took a good couple of weeks for demolition of all the restrooms. You get a sense of that work being done. So now we're back out looking what used to be the reception desk. Reception desk is gone now because we're actually going to have a floating reception desk, and you're kind of looking at an area that is going to be the new art gallery space. So now we go to the next picture, kind of on the backside of that wall, and you can see we've opened up the walls that are in the hall. That's going to be an all-big-glass storefront, and even the wall where you see that door as you look, that's, in this picture, that's not yet been removed, but that's actually going to be removed as well. So it'll be a glass wall going down and a glass wall turn for the new art gallery space. This is one of our classrooms, fully demoed, and you see the extent of work that's being done. This is the main Police Academy classroom. That's also being fully demoed and reworked. Another one of our classrooms gives you a sense of the ceiling work that's being done in here as well with that. So that's a demo, and just a little bit of a teaser once again, this is what it's going to look like. And it's going to be beautiful, but you have to have a place to start, and the place to start is the pictures that you just saw. That ends my report.
What's the size of the workforce on this job?
It varies. So on certain days, it'll be 10, 10 to 15. We've had as many as 30. We really have a lot of trades in there now. The safety reports that they run every single week, STenco has a separate team that comes in and assesses the safety. We then review those safe reports on Tuesday mornings, and then there's course corrections, and they're ruthless around safety, and not just for the STenco team, but for every one of the subs that is there as well. That's doing a good job.
Is the gun range part of this project?
The actual range is not, because that was a separate project that the college completed about two and a half years ago.
Thank you. Any other questions for trustees? Trustee Hatcher?
I just, as a point of reference for me, when was Morris Lawrence Building built, and how much did it cost?
I don't know the answer to the cost part of it. I will get that information.
And the year, do you know the year?
I don't know the exact year. It's about 25 years old.
Okay, that helps.
Any other questions? Thank you. That was a very interesting presentation.
Thank you. You could go on TV or something.
Now, we turn to remarks of fellow members of the trustees. Anybody have any thinking they'd wish to share tonight? Trustee Hatcher?
I'd just like to thank Rose and Company for the note cards that we got. It's nice to be able to use cards that are from Washington Al students, and it has it on the back of the card, and I'm always quite proud to send these out, so thank you very
Anybody else? President Blanca, do you have remarks for us this evening?
Yes, I do. Well, thank you very much, Trustee Hatcher, because I, in turn, would like to thank our dean of business. My gosh, what's wrong with my memory right now? Don't tell me your name. I know your name, Eva. Eva Samoski. Yes, she's phenomenal.
It's the mask.
Yes, I know. It is the mask, yes. So Eva, thank you. Thank you so much, and that was a nice practice that you started since you've been here. And some other cool things that that department does, you know, they do fundraising for our students, and they actually had a drive, which was a very successful... How many thousands of dollars did you raise? $4,000. So thank you. Thank you, Eva, and thank the faculty, your group. It's the end of the year. Just want to thank the Board for your support all year, for the work that you do, and I know that probably to the audience, whoever's watching us around the world right now, they probably don't realize that we do have meetings. We're, Finance, trustee D'Varity, who is our finance chair, sits down with our VP of Finance, Terry Barnes, and myself, and every finance chair has done that previously and goes through all of the numbers and all of the books and everything that we do, because it probably might seem to people that, you know, the Board just approves things, and that's not what happens. And I also would like you to know that, you know, I meet with Chair Milliken before every Board meeting. We spend time going over the agenda... We spend time going over the agenda, the items, any questions that he might have. So although it just seems like it, you know, everything is just passed across the table, that is not how it works. So I'd like to thank all the trustees because you've all sat in these roles and I appreciate it. And thank you so much. And I'd also like to, this opportunity to thank the staff, all the employees, the grounds, the maintenance that have been working with us pre-COVID and pre-vaccine, as well as the faculty that have worked with us and staff pre-vaccine. And those that have continued, everyone that's continued to work with us, our faculty, our staff have been amazing in any role that they have here at our college. And I want to thank all of you because this has been the most stressful time, I think, any of us have ever experienced. And we're making it. I mean, we are making it, you know? Some days might not look as good as they should, but you know, as long as we keep working at it and we keep those students, you know, as our main focus and we don't lose sight of why we're here, we're going to do it. And so, thank you. And to the students also, wish them a happy holiday and this wonderful community for supporting us. Thank you. And please mark January 13th on your calendar because it's Martin Luther King Jr. Day and we will be having an event that day. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We move now into old business. We have a couple of action items in front of us this evening. On tab E, you'll find Proposed Changes to Policy 5045, Policy on Emeritus Staff. And the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed changes to Policy 5045 as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Well, I move that the Board approve the proposed changes to Policy 5045.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
And we have support. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Policy changes are adopted. Thank you. We also have proposed changes to Policy 1070, Trustee Emeritus Policy. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed changes to Policy 1070 as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
DeVarty moves we accept or approve Policy 1070, Trustee Emeritus Policy.
Thank you.
Support.
And we have support. Is there any further discussion?
I, I would just...
Trustee McKnight-Morton, please.
I missed my turn, chance last time. Just, just for me, understanding there was administrative review was back in May of 2002. Is this an administrative review or is this something that it was decided upon to have somebody review this and who did it? I guess that's what I'm saying.
Mr. Barkov, can you enlighten us?
There was confusion around the use of the Emeritus email accounts. The board brought this to our attention. So we looked at the policies. We try to make sure the policies reflect current practices and try to provide clarity. And that's how we got this. It wasn't as part of an administrative review process.
But we're making changes, so the, the, the change is not administrative. So what would you call it then?
It's going to be a revision to the policy.
Okay. I, I don't see that.
President Blanca?
I, I think, I may be incorrect, Trust, um, Trust, Trustee McKnight-Morton. But I think what you're asking is, so administrative review is a practice that was done pre-Blanca. And that was a review process where the administrators would go through the policy. And if they felt the policy didn't need changes, which isn't a bad idea, they would say, we reviewed it. And in that, in 2002, they reviewed it and they said, this doesn't need any revision. So when they did that, they would type on the bottom, administrative review 2002. Our revisions have been to the board. So anytime, so that's, it doesn't say administrative review because this is a board revision, not that we didn't review it. It's a board request to review it. And the administration will of course support this board policy.
Okay. My, my question now is, and I understand that because I was here at that time. For me, for clarity, is there any way that it could be a, a revision by the board or board revision or requested by the board so that, of 20, say, December 2021?
Oh, I understand. So what's going to happen tonight when, if this board approves it? It will say adopted or revised and it will say today's date by the Board of Trustees?
Thank you.
Okay, yes. It will say that on the bottom.
All right. Afterwards.
After you approve it.
After we approve it. Okay, great. Thank you.
If we approve.
If you approve it. Right.
Any further discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
McKnight-Morton, yes.
Thank you. Changes are, proposed changes are now approved. A discussion item, Internet connectivity upgrade. CIO Kruger, could you explain to us what we're looking at?
So as you all know, internet connectivity is, is critical. And 18 months ago, when we entered into a three-year contract for 1 gigabit per second of internet connectivity, we had no idea of knowing that the Zoom connectivity needs would increase dramatically. And as a result, that 1 gigabit per second internet pipe is not enough. And so we need to increase that pipe from 1 gigabit per second to 4 gigabit per second. And in order to do so for the remaining 18 months of that contract, the increase is going to be 64,836. Now, due to the fact that that increase is related to pandemic-related bandwidth needs, through May of 2022, the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund will cover that price increase. And after May 2022, the increase will be funded by the general fund. That really is what our, our need amounts to. And the dynamic denial of service protection that we currently have will obviously still continue. So everything will still continue as is, but more pipe.
May I?
President Blanca?
Thank you. I'm going to have, I'm going to ask you, from what I understand, we need an approval. We are requesting an approval on this, this evening. Is it because of the HERF funds? Is, is it because we need this to, to effectively start second semester? Why, why is it that we need this approval this evening? And because we did not bring it to you before the last meeting. And you'll notice, trustees, that we have two items that seem to kind of follow through in this pattern, this one and then the next one. So could you just explain this one, please, and why it's important for a vote tonight if the trustees so desire?
Yeah, the, the reason it's, it's important for a vote tonight is, is we're currently over, over our bandwidth. And we expect to be even more over our bandwidth come January with increased use of Zoom even then. So we're expecting even more, even more bandwidth needs to come up in January. So that's, that's why we're, we're coming to you today. As we've been monitoring it, you know, it's just going to go up.
Question?
Yes.
Question? Because we're going over our bandwidth, are we paying any premium overages?
We have not been, uh, there's a bursting fee when it happens more than twice a month. We have not had to pay that as of, as of yet. But my concern is if we don't address this, that we would have to pay that burst.
Right.
But, but to date, we have not had.
So the bursting fees would exceed the, the 43,000 increase, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. So we're already bursting over our 1 gigabit?
Yes.
Trustee DeVarty?
So we're expecting the Emergency Relief Fund would fund the major portion of the 64,000 for this fiscal year. Because our fiscal year ends at the end of June, right?
Correct, correct.
So we're, we're ending up going to pay out of our budget one month.
Correct.
After we've been reimbursed by the Emergency Relief Funds.
That's correct.
That sounds great to me.
Any other questions? Now, I believe that we need to amend our agenda.
I move that we amend our agenda so we can act on this with a vote tonight. This tab G, the resolution to approve 18 months connectivity and spend the additional 64,000.
Is there support? We have support. Any further discussion? Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
And following that, I move that we take action and vote upon this motion.
Second.
And we have support. Is there any further discussion? Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. Stands approved. We now move to new business and another action item. Fiber optic cabling and network data drops for faculty office areas. And President Blanca, do you have some light that you would like to shed on this?
Yes, I would. And I guess I could use Todd Kruger again and Terry Barnes. So to the board, that, let me, I'd like to explain this to the board. First, as you know, we have been offering Zoom classes. And, and very popular and, and successful. And prior to returning to campus, most of these were done from home. But once we return back to campus, faculty and staff will be using our, our own connectivity for these Zoom classes. And we did not have the connectivity that was adequate for us to provide these Zoom courses in order for them to be offered in January. So, um, what happened is that, Todd, you want to explain what happened then and...
Yeah, so, so what we did is we came up with, with a series of priorities that we received from construction as far as the different priorities on campus.
Todd, can you come on the mic a little bit?
So, so what we did is we worked with construction to come up with different priorities on campus. And we didn't know how many of those priorities we would be able to get done. So we batched them, right? So we had a, a, a priority for the LA building, one for the SC building and so on. So we batched them. We've got quotes based on these priorities, okay? Both for the data drops and for fiber. Again, we didn't know how much could be done by a vendor and everything else. So once we got those, those, those quotes, we then, you know, issued recs for those quotes, which were below the threshold for going to the board. We were not trying to game any system. That's what we kind of batched them based on projects. And, and so that's how it did. Of course, there was coordination, you know? Terry and I spoke about what we were doing and why we were doing it. So that's, that's what we did and then moved forward on getting the work done.
So then what we realized and through this process is, you know, they were doing it building by building, but that's a project that when you add it all together, it comes to the board for approval. And so according to Board Policy 6050, there is a provision in, in this policy, an explanation that says that there's an exception to this, to the board policy of where the president may approve a purchase without coming forward to the board in the case of an emergency of a utility. And I'll read it. It says, "The Vice President or Vice President of Administration and Finance may make exceptions for contractual commitment dependent upon the circumstance involved, such as utilities and emergency repairs, under very unusual circumstances, or if a unique product or service may be obtained from only one source, which this falls under, the Vice President of Administration and Finance, after consultation with the President, may waive, may waive this policy. However, the Vice President of Administration and Finance may not waive conformance to the state or federal laws concerning discrimination limits or other constraints. The Board of Trustees shall be promptly notified of such exceptions." So once I was informed of this, we discussed it. I contacted our Vice President for Finance on the Board and spoke with Trustee DeVarty. And I also spoke with the Board Chair, Bill Milliken. And, and so I, I'm bringing this to you, asking you that you would acknowledge an exception to be made to the requirements of the Board of Trustees' Policy 6050 in relation to this project. The cost of this project was 240,912. And because of this, we're going to be able to operate in January. That's...
Trustee DeVarty?
I just want to say that in, when I was notified about this and took a look at it, it was clear to me that this was expected expense anyway sometime during the next three years. And because of our immediate needs, this just needed to be jumped up ahead. It was clear from the VP of Finance that the funds are there to do this now. And I think it's really important to the university to have all the capability, or to the college, to have the capabilities it needs to fulfill the educational needs of our staff and our students. So I'm, I, I'm fine with what you did with moving ahead with this to make it happen. And I, I will support accepting this exception that you've taken, that you've been, had to make and will vote in favor of it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Trustee Hatcher?
I'm a little unnerved by it, although I, I guess I trust all of you for making that decision. Was there any opportunity for a phone call or an email or something to us to let us know about this rather than having it come right here at the meeting?
Well...
Is that possible, the next time or something?
You know, that would be good, the next time to call each one of you. I contacted the CF, you know, the Vice Finance, Trustee DeVarty, and Milliken, but absolutely.
I think it's, I think it's important that we know that before we see it on a green sheet of paper.
Absolutely. That point's very well taken. I agree. Thank you.
I, I want to add that in all my time on the Board, albeit not as long as the esteemed Trustee McKnight-Morton that I sit next to, who's been here for some years, longer than I have, this is the first time I've ever seen this invoked. And I trust that the administration had to in this case. And I agree with Trustee Hatcher that perhaps an email to the effect that we were doing this and this would be coming up on our Board ahead of this meeting. and this would be coming up on our Board ahead of this meeting to all the Board members would probably have been a good thing.
That's well taken.
For increased transparency. But I have no problems with the decision.
I would just like to chime in. And trustee D'Arati is correct. This is never, since I've been on the Board, ever. So this is the first time. It's always the first time, but you never know. I trust their decision. I trust that their, what they've done is within the guidelines and the boundaries of what was just read by the president. So I do trust them with their decision, what has been done.
Thank you.
I'd also like to remind everybody, these are funds that we previously discussed expending. And it becomes a matter of timing that we're doing it now as opposed to over the course of the next two to three years.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees acknowledge the exemptions made to the requirements of Board of Trustees Policy six-zero-five-zero in relation to the project as submitted. Do you want to hear a motion?
So moved. D'Arati moves.
Support.
Support. Any further discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer D'Arati?
D'Arati, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The recommendation is approved. Tab I for discussion. Resolution to be post-secondary partner for Plymouth Canton Community Schools Middle College Program. DVP Blakey has some thinking she'd like to share.
Good evening. You have a resolution in front of you. You know, Washnaw Technical Middle College was the second middle college in the state, over twenty-five years old now. Now there's over one hundred and fifty middle colleges in the state of Michigan, and they're expanding. Part of the application process for a school district to begin a middle college program is to apply to the state, and they must have a post-secondary partner as part of that application process. We were approached by Plymouth Canton Schools to, they are interested in starting a middle college program. So you can have a middle college school, which is what WTMC is, or you can have a program within a high school. And so that's a program that Plymouth Canton Schools would like to do. So it would be basically an option for their students as they build this program. And so this is a resolution for us to support that application. Plymouth Canton Schools is comprised of three high schools, Plymouth Salem and Plymouth High. It's about sixty-two hundred students on their high school campus of those three high schools. We already have some students who are enrolled, but a middle college program would allow, kind of expand those options for those students. Where again, they can add that thirteenth year of funding for the student to be able to complete a certificate or associate degree. So I've been in a number of meetings with their Chief Academic Officer, and they're very excited about being able to offer this program, programming for their students.
Trustee Hatcher?
What kind of administrative structure would this require? Would this require a different Board or President?
No, 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 no. So, no. So there, again, as it's a program, it's not like it's a charter school, like WTMC has their own kind of separate Board. It's not, we're not, it's not a chartering situation. It's just a program within the school. So right now, like, we're the middle, we're the support partner for IFCE. So Ypsilanti Schools has a middle college program at their high school. We are, Dexter has a middle college program at their high school in Livingston County. So Livingston County has a middle college program through the ISD that is available to all five high schools in Livingston County. So we're, again, already the middle college partner for those institutions. Once this school gets approved, we also have a lot of middle college students that enroll with us, but we're not their middle college partner. So we have some schools, you know, students throughout the state, especially as we've expanded our online programming, we have other middle college students who are in programs across the state who are taking advantage of our classes. They're not restricted in terms of where they gain their college credits for their middle college program.
trustee D'Arati?
I see a real opportunity for expanded enrollment here. Do you have a sense, have you done any sort of analysis of potential additional enrollments that we can see with this partnership?
It'll depend on their programming. I don't know those numbers yet because it'll take, it'll probably take a couple of years because they'll have to identify the students, offer the programming. For middle college students to access a program, they have to declare by the count date of their junior year, by eleventh grade, that they want to be in a middle college program. That allows them to stay on for the thirteenth year. And so again, they start, we start looking with the tenth graders indicating, are they maybe interested in the middle college programming? And then they select and they actually, you know, sign up for the programming in eleventh grade. And then we work with the school to figure out which programs they want to access. And they do want to, you know, access a variety of our programs, especially in our occupational area.
Do you have an estimate with the existing school districts that we serve in this role? How many enrollments it brings us with the existing school districts we're working with? Or just a guestimate?
Again, so this will be an option with their, within their program. You know, do I think it's going to be a thousand? No. Do I think it's going to be well over a hundred? Yes. Because again, they're offering IB programming, AP programming. So again, they're looking at this as an additional option for their students. But with sixty-two hundred students, there's a lot of students who'd be able to take advantage of our programming. But again, those programs generally grow. They don't just come on with hundreds. They gradually grow as they identify the students. We want to make sure that the students are ready for college classes before we bring them in for programming. So it's a, it's a, it's a growing process.
Thank you.
So the students in IFCE, Dexter, Livingston County, and then perhaps at Plymouth Canton, enroll in this in eleventh grade?
They have to declare that they want to be a middle college, so for the state.
Right.
So the school district, the student has to be flagged in the school system that gets reported to the state. They have to be flagged as a middle college student by the count date of eleventh grade, which is basically that fall semester. They can always, the student can change, they can change their mind and graduate after twelfth grade if they want. They can't go the other way. So if they go past the eleventh grade count date and are not flagged as a middle college student, then they can't stay for that thirteenth year. But students who have signed up as a middle college student, for some reason, if they change their mind and they get to be their senior year, they can say, yeah, I'll just graduate with my regular class and not stay for my thirteenth year, but it doesn't go the other way.
The thirteenth year is the occupational program at Washnaw, or what's the?
The thirteenth year, a middle college program basically says that the student, the state is going to provide a thirteenth year of foundational funding. So like that seventy-five hundred dollars that they get for each full-time student at the high school. That thirteenth year, they're basically saying, we're going to provide that thirteenth year, and the student has to complete at minimum a college certificate or associate degree. So for WTMC, we have, you know, ninety percent of their students actually getting associate degree when they're leaving. So again, when they get that thirteenth year, that's their high school graduation requirements then become, no, I have to have a college certificate or associate degree to meet my high school graduation requirements.
But WTMC doesn't have a thirteenth year.
Oh, yes, they do.
They do?
Oh, absolutely.
Had no idea.
Yes, they do. Now, a lot of their students don't need that thirteenth year to finish up. But they do have option, they do have option to access that thirteenth year.
Cool.
Any other comments? Trustee McKnight Morton?
I just feel so happy about this program. When our, going back in institutional history here for the ones who are not aware of how it started, I was the first year being on the Board when our Vice President, Guy O'Terry, came and did a ton of research, told the Board that this is what he's found. And from out of state, New York and a few other places, that had this early middle college, middle, early middle college. And we were asking questions, just like trustee Hatcher and a few others here on the Board. How's this going to work? What's it going to look like? How many students do we need? How much is this going to cost? It was something that the Board stepped out on faith and trustworthiness for Vice President Guy O'Terry and his reports to us every month. And he's the one that I really contribute this program to because of his determination that this could work. And to make sure that it would work, he enrolled his son in the program. So there was only a few that started out in this program from the community. But they went on, become very successful. And then after that, every year, we would get these reports, every semester. Then it came to the point, it was a lottery. We could not believe, a lottery. So this is really astonishing for me to hear all of these. I had not heard of all of these other schools that are doing it. And it makes me really proud. It really does make me proud to understand that parents took their trust or put their trust in us to have their child enroll in this program and not still be in the regular schools. Now, did we have issues with some school districts? Yes. Wasn't all peaches and cream. But we persevered. And now it's just, it's just not even a thought anymore. I just had to say that. Thank you.
trustee Hatcher?
I have to add, trustee Diana, that Guy O'Terry initiated this, but Gary Downen, who was faculty in electronics, did most of the legwork and planning for the WTMC. And I always want to give the faculty who were involved credit for all the work that he did, especially handling the districts who, we didn't want to be a charter at first. We wanted it to be an alternative. But we sort of had to go to charter because of the disputes with the other districts. And Gary handled that very well and did most of the traveling around the country to find out about it. And I guess what I'm noticing is that we're going to be a community college that's focused on young people and old people. I'm just saying. It's coming, but thanks, Linda, for all your work with it.
Can I just add a last comment?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, since you're both hearing this. I had a takeout. I went to a restaurant, Applebee's. I had to carry out my car. It was raining. And the girl came out and the waitress came out. And she said, are you the Rose B. Blanca that is the president of Washnaw Community College? And I'm thinking, God, I hope I ordered the right thing. And I said, yes, I am. And she said, well, I go to WTMC. And I'm in my thirteenth year, and she told me all about it. And I was so proud of her because, you know, and you're seeing signs everywhere, you know, eighteen dollars an hour and just hoping to get, you know, employees. I was so proud of her that there were, you know, there she was, working, going to school and working. So there you go. That's one of our WTMC students.
Thank you so much.
Good report.
Thank you.
The other discussion matter that we have is receipt of the FY twenty-one single audit. DVP Barnes?
Just very briefly, as you guys know, we have a requirement not only to have our financial statements audited, but also we receive federal funding. So the federal government requires that we have our federal funds audited. Normally, this is presented in the October Board along with the financial statements. But at that time, the partner, their audit firm stated they didn't have some of the guidelines they needed to complete the audit. So the single audit was postponed. We've since received the results of the single audit, and I'm happy to report that it was completely clean and without any finding whatsoever.
Good news. Any comments? trustee D'Arati?
So we approved the original audit, minus this piece. And I'm wondering if for federal funding or for any other sorts of funding, if there's any time necessity to approve this sooner? Or can we just wait through the normal course of action until next?
We can wait for the normal course of action.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Barnes. I would now entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved. Second.
And support. I want to thank trustee Landau for phoning in from afar to be a part of this decision-making evening.
He's in Frankfurt, that's a hard line.
Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer D'Arati?
D'Arati, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
The trustee meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everybody.
Yeah.